Good evening. Welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, July 25, 2017. Before beginning the formal meeting agenda, I would like to read a statement on behalf of the Board. Over the past couple of weeks, there have been a number of media reports on a tragic death that recently took place in Hingham. As parents, members of this community, and elected representatives of the town, we mourn the loss of Mr. Reeves and offer our condolences to his family and all who knew him. We also fully support the members of the Police Department in their difficult mission. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, July 13, 2017.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from our meeting of July 13, 2017, as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on anything not on the agenda? Beth? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street. And two things. One, I'd like to know where I should go. I'm concerned about the safety issues of the entrance into the sports equipment at the high school facility. And it's a one-way road, and we have a lot of incidents lately where we're having traffic coming up the hill. And with it being a blind corner, I don't know if it's because I've got my windows open and doors open, or because I'm outside in the playground with the kids in the driveway. But there's been a lot of screeching of brakes as people come around the blind corner. And so I don't know where to go to try and get that addressed.
Ted, what would that be for Margaret Conity or the Traffic Committee?
Well, I would look at both resources. One, the town's Traffic Committee, but I'd first go to the School Department and talk to them.
Into the School Department, so I just didn't know where else to go.
Those are the first two locations, and I'd go to the Traffic Committee second with your issues and have them begin to look at it.
Okay. I'm just afraid somebody's going to get hurt because they come around that blind corner, somebody's coming up the wrong way, and you hear "Eeeeh" as they brake. And if somebody doesn't brake, it's a head-on right into the... And they're also passing people walking and...
And I could also ask the Police Chief to take a look at that specific intersection.
Appreciate that. Yeah?
Thank you.
Okay. And the other issue is, with all of the issues coming up for the town and all the wonderful projects going forward, I saw on the agenda tonight, for example, the, I believe it's the Town Committee for the Town Hall, and there's also committee for the... There's separate committees, but there's lots of issues. We're going to have a new fire station, maybe it was a fire station, possibly new library, possibly new swimming pool. And there's multi-wonderful, talented committees with very knowledgeable people on it. And I wondered if there was any way to get those committees all to get together, maybe one person from each one, so that we're not duplicating services. We have lots of auditoriums in town. We have, you know, multi-field uses and needs, so that if there was a way where we could address that, so not only are we dealing with the cost of building new facilities, I know the Police Department needs new facilities, I know Situate and Norwell, for example, have combined their building into one. Maybe if we're addressing the new fire station, we might put space for new police facility there, but, you know, or the country club, you know, Jay McGrail does a wonderful job. And he not only helps out on fields in the town and all sorts of other things, but we have function halls there that aren't used a lot of times. And maybe our senior citizens could use them. I just sort of think because we have so many talented people, if we could put them all together, we may not duplicate services that we need to then pay to maintain, because for years maintaining an old house, you have to think ahead at projects, whether it be heating or roofs or whatever, and there's lots of expense in doing that, so that if we don't have two facilities doing the same thing, it might make it easier on the town budget as we find we're crunching our numbers to maintain so people can live here.
Thank you for bringing that forward, and I think, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. As we talk about our goals and objectives, I see that as a place where we can advance this conversation a little bit. I think we've talked as a town about not only the financial piece of it, but one thing that this Board's also talked about in the past is just what you said, how do we coordinate efforts so that our total tax dollars work the best for us and in the most effective way? So we actually, tonight on our agenda, have goals and objectives, and town facility needs are going to be one thing that we'll be discussing a little later, so we'd invite you to stay and participate in the conversation then.
Okay. And before I go, one last thing. Are you going to talk about Aquarian tonight? I know it was a possibility on your agenda.
We have, just in terms of the agenda, we have a vote to, we have a possible vote to intervene in the proposed acquisition. That is a sort of a procedural vote.
Okay.
We will not be having substantive discussion about Aquarian.
Okay. I just wanted to put a plug in for buying it, because having just had street cleaning, or pipe cleaning, which I know is needed, we had three calls for the, to do one job for three different nights where, you know, "Don't use the water, don't wash your clothes, don't take a shower, don't do all of this stuff." And no calls to say it had been done or hadn't been done, but then another call another night. And, you know, I don't think they're looking into protecting the people that they are servicing or making it convenient. So I plugged to move forward in trying to...
Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the 99 Restaurant and Pub Change of Manager. Is anyone here?
General manager.
Are you Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Please have a seat at the table. Could you introduce yourself and please explain what you're asking the Board to consider this evening?
My name is Kevin Delaney, a newly transferred general manager from the Plymouth 99 to the Hingham 99.
Welcome.
Where they put, thank you very much, where they transferred Megan Katenberg back down there to take over as a training general manager, and I'll be overseeing this store right now while we're still up and running. And hopefully, I'll be here when we get the new store and train my own new staff. So I'm looking for the transfer as manager, and the liquor license into my name.
And Tom? Everything is...
He's in order.
Everything is in order. Questions from my colleagues?
No.
Nothing? Nope. Looks good to me.
Okay. I'd accept a motion.
I move that we approve the request of 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC DBA 99 Restaurants and pubs for a change of manager to Kevin Delaney, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, Mr. Delaney.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
So I just want to say for the record that it's 7:05 PM, and we're talking about the compressor station. For those who were here a few meetings ago, I think we took this matter up at, you know, o dark thirty. Ted, do you want to maybe just give an introduction to this agenda item?
Sure. As the Board's aware, the issue of the compressor station, or the potential sighting of a compressor station in Waymouth has been an issue for a number of Hingham residents, and the Board's asked me to look at ways to manage addressing it, and I've given you my recommendations, which would include a letter in the file that is addressed to Howard McMillan, Executive Director of the U.S. Department of Transportation, Pipelines and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. I'm sure there's an acronym for that. Actually, there is, down there. And of course, it's signed by you folks as Board members, and it expresses the opinion of needing to have significant more answers to the public safety issues, specifically air quality within the area. And also, a suggestion that you form a task force of Hingham residents to initially advise the Board of Selectmen as to the range of issues to be considered relative to the compressor issue. And that's a pretty broad charge, and it's broad because I think the Board, when they staff the committee or the task force, needs to think about, as this issue is developing, you know, where they want it to go. Right now, it's to advise the Board, so they have to bring back their findings to the Board and ask you for action. And I would say until you have a better understanding of how the issue's rolling out, you might want to keep a little closer to the administrative side of that.
Paul or Karen, any comments, thoughts on either the letter or the recommendation for the task force?
Yeah. You know, first of all, I appreciate all the information that Ted had gathered and presented, and I think it came from many of you in the audience. It was informative to me as I reviewed the letter and reviewed the advice to move forward with the creation of a task force. I have to say, one of the stark things for me, when I was going through and editing the letter these last several days, was really visualizing what is within the radius of that compressor station site. And when you stop and think about the number of, the number of touchpoints, not only in Waymouth but in Hingham, that corridor, when you're driving by Stop &amp; Shop, to the commuter boat, to daycare centers, to schools, you know, I think it gave me a visual that I maybe hadn't focused on before, and so I appreciate that. And that's reflected in this letter. We did try, and I, you know, I know Mary and Paul made some edits as well, we did try to position this as, "This affects us too. We're not just joining on with Waymouth. We have independent reasons for being really, really concerned about this sighting of the compressor station." So I appreciate all of your efforts to date to bring us up to speed. There's a lot of information out there, and it's been helpful to have it packaged up in a format that we can review, so I appreciate that.
And I would just add that I think one of the things we've been talking about is, what is the best way for Hingham to engage? We want to engage in this effort in places where our voice and what we say can add to the conversation. And it's such a complex project with so many different touchpoints, that some of this is understanding where we can be the most effective. And also, I think we've gotten an appreciation for the importance of coordinating our efforts with the various groups. You know, if I think about the Four River Residents Against the Compressor Station, they've been at this for two and a half years. And so certainly, the way that we want to engage is in a way to be helpful. And so I think, you know, the letter, as Karen said, kind of touches a little bit more on the Hingham impact, which we think will differentiate and bring a different voice. I think the approach of the task force makes sense to me. You know, as we think about, as we think about moving forward on this, I think that some of it is a little bit of an education process, and some of it is being aware of the different places where we could engage. And as I think about it, it would be very helpful to this Board to know that there are a group of concerned citizens who are making us aware of those different opportunities where we can go. I think I should also say that Ted and I, and some residents who are concerned, met with our litigation counsel as well, to understand what intervenor status meant. And so we have asked counsel to help us with that, as well as to reach out to his counterparts in Waymouth, to, again, just continue to sort of understand where our participation can be helpful. I think since that time, the Governor has engaged, I think, to the delight of many people, so we're going to have to see how that goes as well. So, anything, Paul, to add before I open it up?
No. No, I think you ladies have said it all, so I'm just listening to what the public wants to say.
I just had one more comment. I mean, typically, I am concerned about a charge to a committee this broad, but I agree with you. I think, I think we need to form it, we need to charge it, and then, once we staff it, I think we could have some collaborative conversations around tasks.
Right.
Because I think, you know, I think we need to provide some direction, and I think we also need to provide some touchpoints back to this Board and timeline.
I think all of those things will be helpful. Anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this matter? Jeff? Okay. Could you go up and please introduce your name and your address?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Mathien, 159 Stainer Drive. I am also one of the co-founders of Hingham Residents Against the Compressor Station, for those who don't know, and thank you so much for your hard work and attention to this matter. I think going forward, we have to recognize that, as you'd mentioned, it's important for Hingham to say, not, "We support you, Waymouth," but this is really important for us too. And there are some very viable concerns for us as a town independently. And frankly, if we don't have those, these letters going out, if we don't have our hat in the ring, we don't have our hat in the ring. You know, if this does come to fruition, we might be looking at this in terms of, how do we mitigate the, these risks, these damages? If we, if we don't get involved now, we might be getting involved with torts later on. You know, it's things that, it's really important to be as ahead of this as possible, and we're certainly not ahead of it. So it's time for us to really move on. And I think the, thank you for keeping the, if it's passed tonight, the task force broad, because the tasks might be changing that you want to give to them. So hopefully, it will be, we know how much you have on your plate, but when things come up for the compressor station, it might be that we need to act in a timelier manner. So if you have a team that you know you can turn to and say, "We need this information quickly," and your opinion on our options, so then you guys can do your job most effectively, it's really appreciated. And the last thing is, it's the end of July, it's the dog days of summer, although you wouldn't know from the weather today. So while the seats aren't all filled, we're certainly here representing all of the people who are so, so counting on you to continue to stay upfront with this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. And, you know, the group that Jen co-founded also plays an important role in advocacy, too. There are a lot of different pieces to this, and public policy is one piece, and advocacy is another. And I think what we've seen is that the advocacy has really made a difference. Anyone else comment on this? Okay. So we have two motions.
I move that the Board of Selectmen authorize a letter to be sent on its behalf to the Executive Director of the U.S. Department of Transportation, Pipeline, and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to move that the Board of Selectmen form a five-to-seven-member compressor station task force with the charge to advise the Board of Selectmen as to the range of issues to be considered relative to the compressor station.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And just for the benefit of anyone who is interested with the task force, we would invite anyone who's interested in being considered, who hasn't already done so, to go to the town website and fill out a Talent Bank application. The Talent Bank application is a way that you can notify us that you're interested in serving on this task force. It asks you for some information about background, and that'll come to all of us, and that will allow us to begin the process of making those appointments. And we do understand that there continue to be developments in this, so we want to strike the right balance between giving interested residents enough of a window to express their interest, and then forming the committee. So we, again, would appreciate, we appreciate those who have already put their name forward, and we would invite others to as well. Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a policy recommendation for the special one-day liquor license application.
Yeah. So I think at the last meeting, I took you through a few of the changes that we were contemplating making to our one-day liquor license form, and in essence, our one-day liquor license diligence process. And the form before you tonight reflects the work of Sharon Profetti, Chief Olson, and myself. We talked with our insurance representative, we talked with comparable towns, we did some research with the state agencies, and have come up with a few, a few changes that we'd like you to consider that I think makes the diligence process more complete. We have added to the form some particular aspects of event description, particularly event parking, that the chief wanted reflected on the application form, so that we could assess whether we needed a detail, or whether we thought the parking location was actually safe for the event. The couple of other things that I think I mentioned this last time around, the state has a online certification that bartenders can get. It's called a tip certification, so it takes you through the responsible service of alcohol. And we are requiring now that all bartenders, whether you work for caterer, or whether you're sort of, you know, sort of self-serving your event, that whoever's serving the alcohol is tip-certified. My understanding is it's a $40 cost, and it's an online program, so, you know, part of what we're trying to do here is not put the one-day events out of business, but bring a little bit greater responsibility in the service of alcohol for these, you know, discreet events. So that would be a requirement. Any, any events taking place on town-owned property would require liquor liability insurance, again, whether or not you're dealing with a professional caterer, who typically would have liquor liability insurance, or if it's your event, you'd be required on town property to have liquor liability insurance and name the town as an additional insured for those events. In any event, we would recommend that all events have liquor liability insurance, but at this stage of the game, other than professional caterers, you know, our recommendation is to not require that. So, you know, I think we've, we spent, we spent some time, I think we've tried to consider and balance the interests, particularly the interests of the town here, and I think the chief is behind this, and I certainly am.
Thank you. Paul?
No. No, I looked at the material and thought about it, and it's reasonable, and it provides clarity with respect to the functions that are proposed to occur in town.
I just want to thank Karen for taking this on and looking through it. You know, we have processes in place, but it's a good idea every once in a while to take a look and see, you know, have, are there any ways we can improve it? And I think we're striking a good balance here between a little bit of protection, but not making it onerous on people. I had suggested, Ted and Tom, that if, when we, after we vote this, assuming an affirmative vote, I would suggest that we reach out to the venues that are common for hosting events, you know, the Community Center, the Ames Chapel, as well as to groups who are, you know, who we know have events. Every PTO has an event once a year, the Hingham Sports Partnership, so that we can make folks aware of this, so that they allot enough time for these extra steps.
Sharon was already ahead of that.
Great.
She's been great to work with.
Are there any questions or comments from anyone in the audience on this topic? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we accept the special one-day liquor license application process.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is Selectmen, Selectmen Goals and Objectives.
And I should just say, at the beginning of this conversation, we, this is the time of year when we, when we set our goals and objectives for the year. And if you saw our meeting a few weeks ago, we had an initial discussion, or we had an initial presentation of the information, and I think we all wanted to take it back and reflect. So tonight is kind of step two. Step two is where we have some, a little bit of discussion. It gives us the opportunity to advance additional items for consideration, and we will not vote on the goals and objectives tonight, because this is the first time that we're hearing new ideas from each other. And we also want to make sure that the Selectmen's Office has the opportunity to also take a look and react to some of this. One of the things we want to be mindful of is that we only have kind of finite bandwidth. So oftentimes, there's a tendency to add a lot of things, but there are consequences with that. So what we would envision tonight is a little bit of discussion about this, and that we would then be on track on August 8th to approve the goals for the year. So Ted, do you want to take us through?
Sure, Mary. And I will, as you asked me earlier, if you guys are trying to put eight pounds of sugar in a five-pound bag, I'll let you know. Tom's going to take you through the summary and the points, and I'll chime in as I need to.
Great. So we're going to start the presentation for the goals and objectives with a couple of slides to summarize last year's accomplishments and the goals and objectives that were, that were met last year. So we started with, we'll start with migration to the GIC Health Plan, the state-run GIC Healthcare Plan, for all town employees. We negotiated, as a town, two very large, complex projects, affordable housing projects that addressed resident concerns, provided benefits to the community, and achieved a one-year moratorium, and are on the path to an uncontested 10% affordable housing through 2030. We also negotiated successfully the final Hingham Maritime Center lease. The South Hingham Study Group is extraordinarily close, I understand, to a final plan. Hopefully, that may have actually...
Very close.
Very close. So we're going to count that done. The purchase of the later property, that was authorized a town meeting two years ago, and that's been completed this past spring. The passage of the Town Administrator Special Act, that is now Massachusetts state law. We implemented a cooperative program between the recreation, the country club, and schools to assess and maintain over 50 acres of athletic fields across the entire town. It's a very cooperative effort among our departments that we're very proud of. We have implemented an accelerated road-building schedule. Our Highway Department, DPW, and Engineering have done extraordinary work to help us continue that accelerated schedule. We joined the Governor's Community Compact Initiative, that's already netted, I believe, close to $30,000 for an expanded and detailed cybersecurity program and protocols in place. We've applied for and received over $1.2 million town-wide in federal and state grants. We completed, as we do every year, our annual budget. Last year was $105.4 million. Negotiated three new union contracts. We coordinated and held a 37 article annual town meeting, successful. Interviewed and appointed approximately 50 volunteers to boards and committees, and we renewed the lease for the tree in Park. To name a few.
Those are the highlights.
Karen or Paul, just before we go over to 18, any comments on last year?
I'm happy with what I hear.
In the past, we didn't put on that when we did our goals and objectives, and when Tom pointed it out to me, I thought that it offered a little bit of a contrast to, you know, our objective when we look at the goals, which is, "We think we can do everything." And then we realized, when we look at that list, there's some things on there that, A, we have to do ordinarily, like have town meeting. And then there's things that come up that we don't even know about. We have to have the capacity, because people expect us to be able to deal with the things that come up, so.
I anticipate in the FY19 presentation, there might be mention of some dog program, perhaps.
Could be.
Man, I can't believe you're bringing that up. So I did have a question raised by FY17 that I will probably bring up under FY18, and that's just the continuing coordination of our, you know, recreational facilities and fields. You know, I know we've, it sounds like we've got stuff, I'm just not familiar with what went on in 2017, and I know that, you know, I know it continues to be something we need to manage.
Great. Okay. So the next four slides are the ongoing efforts that the town makes annually, and we try to flush them out a little, so everyone can understand and get, have some background on these points. And then the last slide is more of the near-term goals that this particular board is especially interested in moving forward on. Okay. So we start with the fiscal objectives. We assess a five-year financial outlook. This is an annual, an annual effort that is completed as part of the annual budget process. We look at the capacity for operating budget increases and our ability to finance large capital projects as a part of that overall review and assessment. Monitoring financial metrics, the fund balance, debt, and long-term liabilities. You know, the fund metrics are analyzed and monitored annually by our accounting staff and by our consulting auditing firm, and you should all feel comfortable that that is regularly monitored by external department. Departments are required quarterly... The departments are, are required quarterly to present their, their budget status, so that we can identify ahead of time if there's any surprises or any problems creeping into their budget.
So that was a change, I think, most of the board members know. That's been a recent change within the last, I think, five, maybe seven years now, where we've actually asked department heads to present on a quarterly basis. It's a formal two- or three-day process. And, you know, previously, it was done more informally with the accounting staff, member of advisory or selectman administration. And the more formal presentation, I think, leads to a, a better discipline and focus on the budget. And, and the fact that it's happening each quarter, and when we are tracking what's, what's being said and what's being responded to, and it just, it creates a better discipline. We haven't, I think we've seen much lower incidences of surprises with an operating budget since we've been conducted.
Okay, the next, the next point, bullet point, is promoting long-term economic development and mitigating subsequently the residential tax burden. You know, the economic development and subsequent tax implications are, tax rate implications are a, they're a, it's a regular consideration for everything we do. So we're always looking for, for additional economic development opportunities, and always with an eye towards its tax rate implications. Identifying and pursuing opportunities to assist the neediest in our community. Again, this is a standard service, government as a service, right? So we're looking at COA, the Veterans Services, tax work-off program, housing programs. This is all standard, standard operating procedure for your government and what we provide to our, to our community.
And I think one of the things that is part of, as of those opportunities that we've done, is looked at any, any ways to mitigate the tax impact for, for those individuals as well. So those two are kind of related.
Very much so. Okay, the next slide discusses the asset management objectives. Here we talked the first bullet, implementing harbor area warrant articles approved by town meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, approved by town meeting. The town meeting had approved a couple of harbor articles, large, large project articles in the last, over the last couple of town meetings. And our engineering staff is actively working towards the implementation of those articles. And they're working with the Bathing Beach Trustees, the Harbor Development Committee, and there's a lot of procurement that goes on with that work, there's a lot of planning, and that's all underway. Assessing and prioritizing town facility needs. The harbor, library, town hall, fire, school, and others. Some of this, I think, is perhaps what Ms. Rockoff was, was mentioning at the beginning of our meeting tonight. We want everyone to understand that we have myriad committees that work together towards these goals. Let me just name a few of them. Town Hall Study Committee, the Fire Station Building Committee, Library Trustees, Harbor Development Committee, Bathing Beach Trustees, the School Building Committee, and others. And they're all working together to, to identify and plan for all these town, townwide facility needs. We understand they're, they're, they're large, and there's a lot of them, and we're trying to plan accordingly.
And maybe this is just a, a good place to pause and kind of ask the question, because I think Beth, Beth brought up something that, you know, Paul, we talked about, I think, you know, during warrant season, which is, how do we coordinate these efforts? And I'm just going to build on, you know, one thing that Beth mentioned. So, you know, if you think about auditoriums, you know, we have three auditor, we have auditoriums in schools, we have the auditorium here at town hall, and we have a number of potential projects that might include an auditorium. I know the library project has an auditorium. A foster school might have what they call cafetorium. As we're looking at town hall, the question of, what do we do with Sanborn Auditorium? And, you know, my, my point of view would be, I would hate to see us advance all these projects and find that 10 years from now, we've got, you know, more 200 to 300-seat auditoriums than we need, but we lack a 650-seat auditorium for different events. And, and so as we're having these discussions right now, how do we ensure that we're building right, we're not duplicating, we're not, there aren't any gaps? Because this is also going to be an expensive proposition, and so I would hate for us to say, gee, we, we wish we had done this. And I don't think the taxpayers would have an appetite for us to go back after the fact and add something on.
So I think what I could offer you is that, as you look through the list of committees, some of them are fairly discreet and would probably not reach much past their area, like the Fire Station Building Committee, they're going to build a fire station. Now, their project has a couple of different quirks, but essentially, it's a fire station. Harbor Development Committee is focusing on the harbor-related activities there as of the Bathing Beach. Now, where you get into the things where it's a little more divergent and answers some of your questions or brings up some of your points, the School Building Committee. Again, usually a little more focused on what the school building administration will allow them to build in a structured environment. So the school committee and the building committee don't have the breadth of freedom that they had 20 years ago to design and develop the buildings. The one that I think is going to address a lot of your issues is the Town Hall Study Committee, because this is the one building where we have so many multiple uses, because we developed them 25 years ago, and we took them from all these different areas of town and brought them here. And I think that group, at least a couple of members of that group, have that discipline to begin that conversation and to reach out to other areas, specifically library trustees and school, to talk about areas that they have. There's two things in this building that we have that other buildings have, the gym and a, an auditorium. And I think they'll have to have those conversations and give you back answers as to, you know, what are your policy recommendations? Where, where do you want to go with policy recommendations for each of these activities? And, you know, what are the pluses and minuses? I can remember when we went through this, and I was at the, you know, I got here just at the tail end of a lot of that hard work, but I saw the discussion at the town meetings back in 95. You know, we moved the light plant from their private location, we moved the school administration from a private spot, we moved the police station. And each of those had different reasons for staying in those locations. And ultimately, the Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting had to agree with each of those constituencies, figure out the right course of action, and make a decision. And I think what you want is your committees to put that all on the table for you guys to decide. Not decide it for you and give you a package, but to put it on the table for you to decide and collaborate with them, because you're the ones that are going to, I think, tie all the pieces together, because there are going to be a lot of disparate parts. Different people want to go to different places. And, you know, and, and no one wants to give up their piece of the equation without seeing that they get something back in return that satisfies their mission to go forward. So I think a lot of that will happen on that committee, and then they'll liaise with others and through you.
Well, and it, right, it goes beyond just committee liaise on it. It's just making sure that all of the, all of the stakeholders, all of the tenants, all of those space needs are accounted for. And I understand that the, particularly the Town Hall Study Committee will do that. You know, and I agree with Mary, you know, taxpayers are expecting us to manage across silos. They, they don't see, you know, they don't see the rec department and elder services, they see the town of Hingham. And I think that's the way ultimately we'll approach these capital projects.
I wonder if maybe there's a way that, you know, I realize that a lot of these are on different paths, you know, in terms of timing, but I'm wondering if, not only for our benefit, but for the benefit of the public, if, you know, on a, on a somewhat, you know, whatever, whatever the frequency is, you know, we have the Town Hall Study Committee in to give us a report on where they are at whatever point they are. And, you know, maybe the next month, we have the Fire Station Building Committee come in. Because as important as it is for us to understand all those pieces, I think it's also a way to engage the public. And again, when you look at the scope of these projects, that would be, you know, that would be really helpful.
Well, it also gives us an opportunity to ask questions and steer, you know, request answers, right? If we, if we don't see the, if we don't see the collaboration, or if, you know, sometimes when you're on one of those committees, you, you get entrenched in your task, and we, we've got the ability to sort of pull back and look at it maybe with a broader lens.
And so as you go through and develop your goals, and ultimately develop the goal strategy that you want for the year, I would think absolutely you'd want to bring in those committees that are paramount to those goals, certainly as you rank some of them in your own minds, you know, who do you need in, when you need them in. And I would say the fall would be a good time, so they can get ready for town meeting.
The next bullet is to review and assess all town-owned assets. You know, as government always does, we, we look to assess our town-owned assets and plan for their highest and best use. That's, that's a goal.
I think that's a little bit also about what Beth talked about, to make sure we don't have duplicate assets, and make sure they're being used properly, and to see if we can. So we have looked, for example, at different facilities for the facilities we have here. Would this work for the senior center? Would this work for the rec, or the police, or other issues? So we, we've engaged in those kind of activities, and the committees will give you those reports.
And I would just add, too, that as, as we're looking, and I know for all of us, affordable housing continues to be important, and achieving safe harbor gives us the ability to do that more on our terms, which could also mean a little bit more local preference. And as I think about advancing affordable, affordable housing in the community, I think we want to look to, to assets that the town has and see about the possibility of using those for further affordable housing development.
Do you have a comment?
Please.
I also think that we should explore by our zoning bylaw, the opportunity for using existing housing stock in terms of accessory units, so that people with large homes have options available to them in their later years to be able to live there, and at the same time, have families, younger families be able to come in and enjoy the full use of the home. We were close on that a couple of years ago, and it just went into the ditch, and it's frustrating, because quite frankly, I, I see people doing this without permits now, and we're, we're way behind the curve on it. We should get going on that. Affordability can take all different forms, and I actually have no assurance or comfort that, you know, the comprehensive permit is going to remain static, so.
So is that a planning board initiative?
Ultimately, would be something that would be advanced as a zoning change.
Through the planning board?
And typically, the planning board has historically sponsored them, although they're not the exclusive agent. But I would certainly encourage our colleagues on the planning board to undertake that this year.
I would agree with that.
And actually, I think a few years ago, there was a committee, I think I see a former committee member in the audience for something else, but I think that that work was done, and what we all realized is that, is that it was, it was going to take longer than six months to try to work through the issue. But having said that, I think that there's a lot of great work that has already been advanced, that, that is available. In addition to the, the points you raise, I also have a concern about, I have, I worry that there are these units that already exist in the town, and I worry about safety. I worry about them being done in a way that complies with fire code.
Right.
And, and things like that. So I think it's, it's important to get these on the books and make sure that they are built in an appropriate manner, so.
Well, so, so just so this doesn't drop, is this something that we formally communicate to the planning board? Are you watching TV, planning board?
If it's, if it's a goal of the board, and as you go through all your goals and you set them and decide which ones you want, that's a pretty substantial goal, requires, you know, quite a bit of effort, so I want you to look at them in conjunction with everything else you've said you want to do, so that at the end of the day, you're not, as we said earlier, trying to squeeze eight pounds of that five-pound.
But I'd ask us to include that among, you know, consideration of the board.
I mean, that won't be something that this board and the staff in our, in your office would work entirely on. This would be something we'd have to liaise with the planning board, their staff, and gain their participation to move forward on something that you both would want to support. So, you know, that's, we have to quantify the work for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, the next slide discusses operational objectives. To pursue state and federal grant funding opportunities. You heard on the prior slides about, from the FY17 story, we received, I think it was over $1.2 million in, in outside funding through grant opportunities. So we would obviously continue those efforts. Identify and assess operational cost-saving opportunities, something we always do. And it's, and it's highlighted through our budgeting process and continued through the budget review, the quarterly budget review process every year. So we're all constantly looking for ways to assess and, and identify cost savings in our, in our departments. To explore affordable housing opportunities, you know, just because we're, we're anticipating and hoping for a completion of the, of our 10% goal, or realizing our 10% goal, does not mean that the town is done pursuing affordable housing opportunities. So that's something that would remain as a, as a, historically has remained as a goal. To assess community needs, if formation of task forces is appropriate. On occasion, special interests, or not special interests, but special projects come to light that don't fall neatly within an existing committee's responsibilities, and these require special attention. And the board, historically and appropriately so, has identified task forces to help move those, of the town's interest on those matters. And, and I think we would continue that tradition.
And we've actually already, in addition to the compressor task force we formed this evening, a few weeks ago, we formed a Route 3A task force to help advance that important work and coordinate and liaise with our neighboring communities on the South Shore.
Those are two great examples of why you use a task force. You could have turned the 3A group over to the traffic committee, for example, and that would have consumed all of their work for the next year and a half. Whereas, you know, and they wouldn't be able to do their ordinary stuff. And I think, you know, the 3A task force can focus on it, and same with the other example.
Okay, the next slide discusses stewardship objectives. The first one we tackle here is assessing traffic and parking in Hingham Square and the potential for a central parking garage. And that, and forward in that discussion. The next bullet is to promote environmental sustainability. We have three categories, aquifer and water supply, energy and recycling. So the town is always maintaining an understanding of aquarium's water supply policies. We also have an engaged energy action committee, and they are currently pursuing the appropriateness, to understand the appropriateness of, of a potential application to the state to become a green community, and what that would mean to the town. And then we also have the Long Range Recycling Committee, who recently expanded the recycling components for the, for town hall, for instance. So we are regularly moving to promote environmental sustainability. To leverage website and social media for communications, this is a, this is a building and a growing need in the town. It's one that towns regularly struggle with. We are leveraging, I believe, a Facebook page, a Twitter account, and others. We have several Facebook pages, I believe, through the police department, one through general town government, et cetera. So the next bullet is to explore sewer solutions for South Hingham. That was something that will be borne out of the South Hingham Study Group Committee in their report, which we will see soon.
Among other many issues as it relates to South Hingham, the development corridor, Derby Street, the industrial park.
So, you know, some of these issues have a lot of cross-connection points. You know, exploring sewer solutions for South Hingham cross-connects to, you know, promoting environmental sustainability, aquifer and water supply. Your own Conservation Commission 10 years ago penned a report that talks about the need to begin replenishing the town's aquifer, which really starts in South Hingham and moves through the community. So locating a sewer facility down there that would capture that water usage and recharge the aquifer might change dramatically decades of draining of your aquifer and certainly slow it down. But earlier, you talked about the need to maintain, you know, tax, mitigating your tax impact to your neediest residents of the community or throughout your community. And really, the only significant way to do that is through growth of your tax base, so that people will share in the cost of services of government. And, and so you're, you're bound in Hingham, South Hingham, by sewer. Without sewer utilities, really nothing else can happen down there. And so you're, you know from the budget side of things, you're spending slightly faster than, than I think a flat tax rate would allow for, so.
And I'm sure as the report will detail, the balance of that is traffic and density in South Hingham, right? It's not, it's, it's a complex, right?
You're right. There are a series of issues with respect to the realistic limitations of what can occur there. Although, you know, when we talk about development, I think that it's important to recognize that dairy shops and the shipyard are redevelopment projects. So we're, we're looking at existing structures and saying, all right, that was good then, you know, what would work in the future? So. good then, you know, what would work in the future? So that's been part of this conversation as well.
Great. I think it would be a good idea that when the report is completed, to bring it in and have it be presented here in the meeting. I think the board would find it informative. I think the public would find it informative, and as we start looking at some of these things we want to work on, it'll help explain why we're doing that.
We're hoping that it serves as a white paper for the permitting boards.
Great.
The next bullet discusses the plans to have our town employees and boards and committee members conduct, participate in ethics and conflict of interest and open meeting law training. This is an important aspect of what we do to maintain the public trust. And the state does a good job of setting forth regulations, and we want to make sure that everyone understands them and follows them accordingly.
So this year, some of you have approached me about delving into that a little further and maybe expanding it a little bit. And so what we're proposing for this year, as you know, is a slightly different session. We're also in conversations about asking all the committee members and employees to be there, or at least to verify they watched it on an H cam afterwards. But rather than just have the state come down and have our town council come in and tell everybody what the rules and the rules are, and, you know, which forms you have to file and what you can't do and what you can do. We're also bringing in someone from Bridgewater State University who does ethics education, and we'll talk a little bit about how, what the other side of ethics mean, how to conduct yourself, and how your affairs of working with the government and organization should be approached. You know, I know one thing that will be presented is, you know, does it always have to be your idea when you're on a committee? Or are you willing to share the idea-making process? And so, you know, those are challenges for, from us sometimes. We have a lot of great people, a lot of great ideas.
You're not naming any names, are you?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. I think it's just pretty much everybody.
Yeah, right.
So we can all benefit from that. It's a nice session, and it's enjoyable, too. So hopefully, Tom?
Okay. The next slide discusses this board's near-term goals. We can start with, continue the Aquarian litigation, and including that, that would include the rate case. Next, we're going to discuss the, our next bullet would be to work with advisory to consider long-term project impacts on our fiscal position. Advisory leadership works with the town management on issues relating to long-term fiscal position of the town as standard routine. The leadership of the advisory committee is, works very closely during the budgeting process and fiscal planning process with the town management and the selectmen, and that will continue, as it always has. We want, next bullet is to design and obtain cost estimates for the North Fire Station. You know, this is one of many capital projects that we've been discussing tonight. This is one that might be perhaps a little bit more baked than some of the others, and we wanted to make sure we continue to forward this project as best we can. The Fire Station Building Committee is working towards that final site design and cost estimates.
I'd just like to comment if I could.
Please.
It's my hope, ladies, that we have a three-station fire model, not four. So site is a very important consideration with respect to this, as well as the actual construction of the building itself.
Got it.
I can tell you that I think the Fire Station Building Committee is very much focused with that. When I met with the chair, and then later, I met with another member of the committee, along with Selectman Johnson, I think both people told us the same thing. It's nice when you hear it from two different people. They're planning on a larger station than North Station was, and ultimately, a larger station than South Station is, so that they can have a second crew in any one of the three stations, so that we could run a fourth crew out of three stations and not have to have the capital cost construction of that third, fourth station, and then deal with that every so often.
I think we're in agreement on that.
We're continuing to move on our employees' union contracts. This coming year, we'll be anticipating completing DPW, library, fire, and police personnel contracts. And as we saw earlier tonight, this board is committed to continuing to monitor and appropriately engage in the way with compressor station issue.
So questions and comments from Paul or Karen?
I'd like to put some managing into the square, study the traffic circulation issues. I know we committed to the residents of neighborhoods behind the post office a couple of years ago, that we'd be doing that, and also explore parking opportunities. I really think that keeping the square viable requires ongoing effort and attention, so.
I agree, and I, you know, I know Tom and Ted have spent some time in the square. We've got a lot of construction activity going on, repaving activity, you know, this board has been fully committed, as has Tom and Ted, to the vitality of the square, so.
I would, I think as we're looking at this, and I realize that a parking garage is a more long-term effort, I might ask us to think about what would be, where would we want to be in the next year with it? Because I think sometimes when you have a big goal like this, you kind of don't know where to start. And I agree with you, a year ago, we made a commitment to some citizens who advanced a Warren article.
Right.
And for a variety of reasons, we didn't have the ability to focus on it this past year. So where do we want to be in a year? What's a step we can take towards it? Because I realize a central parking garage is a multi-year effort.
Agreed.
So I have some thoughts. I don't know when, like, go ahead, okay. Do you have anything else?
I'd just like to follow up on what Ted said. Sometimes things materialize that we didn't anticipate, and we've got to have the reserve power to be able to deal with that. Specifically, I'm thinking about our experience last year on Beale Street. That was an extraordinarily demanding and time-consuming exercise, one that I'm immensely satisfied with, but it did require a lot of energy to deal with and cope with, as you remember, Karen. So I'm going to just, on top of your near-term goals, the Aquarian litigation. Oral arguments will be in September. You have a vote later tonight to add to that, essentially, at some level, by intervening on the sale. It's likely that a lot of activity will happen on this during this fiscal year, whether it's in the middle of your town meeting prep, and you have to put it off for a special town meeting, or you add it into your town meeting prep. So I just want you to keep that on the table as something that, to some extent, you've already committed to as a goal, you know, over $1 million with the litigation costs. So at least moving forward with it is going to take some energy for all of you.
Well, my list looked much more doable until I saw the really big list. But, you know, so I, I'm the new person, so, you know, as I kind of went around and talked to people when I was campaigning, and I thought about my experiences on advisory and sort of what I wanted to bring to the table, I just had a few thoughts, and I'll throw them out there. Maybe that some of them can move to at least the bottom of the list. But, so one thing I thought on the financial sustainability point, and I know you and I have had a brief conversation about it, is, and maybe some of this is my nonprofit background, but, you know, I wondered about exploring the ability to create additional stabilization funds and/or friend-of funds, you know, quasi-endowment funds, that would provide some relief from the volatility in some of the budgeting from year to year. Also provides folks with a way to support the town, you know. Anyway, that was that. One of the things frustrating to me, and I, you know, I don't think this will make the list, because I think it's just a heavy lift on the state level. It's really, really frustrating to me that we can't provide more targeted tax relief for the neediest among us. You know, the state really confines how the tax rate gets set and how it gets divided sort of proportionately among all taxpayers according to the assessed value of their real estate. Maybe someday we can, we could work on that. But, you know, I think, just being for myself, I think there are people among us that are willing to pay their fair share, or more than their fair share, and then there are folks that we need to take care of. And the way the way the real estate tax process is structured, we can't do that. Everybody's got to pay the same rate. And so you heard Mary and Paul talk earlier about, we have tax work-off programs. There are little pieces within the tax code that allow for particularly, like elder service tax work-off, and there are two or three opportunities for veterans' tax work-off, but it is, it is one of those things I'd like to, I'd like to keep in the back of our mind, anyway. You heard me mention, I'm new, I'm, you know, coming late to the table on this, but I think we've got to continue to coordinate our recreational assets, and in particular, our fields. So I'd like to continue to think about that. Maybe this comes up as part of the Town Hall master plan, but at some point, I'd like to see us revisit the elder services master plan that was done, you know, now probably seven or eight years ago. It was like 2013, I think it was when I was cycling off the advisory committee. One of the takeaways from the elder services master plan was that folks that live in Hingham want to age in place in Hingham, and kind of to your accessory use point, what can we do? What are the things that we can do? What's government's role in helping, you know, achieve best practices for aging in place? Are there additional programs that we should support through our elder services? You know, like, I don't know, like make and take meals on Tuesdays, or whatever it is. But, you know, that was a really good document at the time, and I think that, as you've pointed out more than once, that cohort is growing fast in Hingham. And again, it's a cohort that I think we need to honor and take care of, and facilitate them staying in town, you know, the best way we can. So that was that. Social media, you know, I think we're, actually, I can't believe I'm even saying this, because I am the worst at social media. But, you know, I don't know. I wonder, I feel like we should do more outreach, and we do a lot of good things, and I feel like our social media presence sometimes can be defensive. Not, you know, some of the departments do a great job, but sort of overall, we're doing a lot of good stuff. Like, this document, when I looked at this tonight, this is a lot of good stuff, and a lot of people are working really hard at it. So, you know, unfortunately, it's hard to post this on Instagram, but, you know, I do think that's the way people are getting their news now. And so even though I think we do a fairly good-
Instagram?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. Don't ask me.
Oh, my daughter would kill me if you heard that.
So, you know, I mean, one thought I had was, can we partner with somebody, a high school junior or senior, to help us think about, like, how does this work, and what should we be doing, and what should we be saying, and how should we be saying it? It's a different way of messaging. And, you know, I think it takes what we're already doing and helps people understand it. I would not be a good person to put on that committee. You know, I applaud Ted and Tom's efforts around employee and staff training and committee training. You know, we've just come through a very intense talent bank process. We're still in the process of appointing volunteers, and as Ted has reminded me more than once, you know, we hire employees, but we're also sort of hiring volunteers. I think Hingham is one of those towns where our volunteers do stuff that other towns hire people to do. And so I think what we'd like to do is make sure that those folks have the right tools, so that when they're in that, in that role, they're productive, their committee's productive, and people are moving forward with the task. I would like to, and I've had a conversation with Hans and with Andrea Young, I'd like to work with the Historic Districts Commission to develop and enhance the stewardship of our historic districts. You know, it's, it's part of our legacy. We need to take care of it, and I want to make sure that the Historic Districts Commission is, you know, utilizing best practices around that stewardship function. This maybe comes back to a little bit of the social media, but good governance measures for us. Are there, you know, are there different things that we should do? You know, should we have quarterly outreach by the board? Should we try to take our meetings to the neighborhoods occasionally? Should we have handheld mics? Although I do think the podium is an improvement. Like, when people are just standing in the middle of the room, you know, it struck me as being difficult to get up sometimes to speak. It's a public meeting, you're supposed to be able to get up and speak, you know, handouts. We talked about this a little bit earlier, and I don't, I don't have the answer to it, but I think we need to continue to work across silos and develop strategic partnerships among boards, commissions, and committees, but also departments. So, you know, we talked earlier about the Bathing Beach project. They're going to have a, they're going to have a room that you could utilize for yoga classes. Well, you know, does elder services needs more physical space to offer stuff? You know, do we try to partner those entities? And how do we, how do we come up with a way to facilitate that communication? I know you, you and Tom do that, but is there a way for the board to try to help to facilitate that? And then, you know, I agree, you know, I sort of think one of our most important projects for us is going to be anticipating the capital needs of the town. I think that, you know, we're looking at Hingham for the next 50 to 75 years right now, with the capital projects that we have on the table, and I think that's probably going to take a lot of our time in the coming year. So Sally, don't worry. I wrote all this down. I'll give it to you. But that's my fire hose of stuff.
Thank you. That's-
It's on Twitter.
I think we're going to a bigger station.
These are all, I think all of these are great, are great suggestions, and I'm glad that tonight, we've got the ability to kind of capture a lot of those and think about some of those. And, you know, Ted and Tom, what I might ask you to think about, as we're all talking about a lot of these ideas, is you have a better line of sight to some of this, to some of this work that could be done by staff and other committees that would be within, sort of within their purview. So, you know, for example, I remember a few years ago, we had a group that I believe Jean Montgomery led to look at targeted tax relief. You know, one thing I'd ask you to think about is, is, you know, do we think that there have been enough developments that it's worthwhile reconvening that, and would they have the capacity to do that work? You know, similarly, maybe checking in with Barbara Farnsworth to see, you know, where is elder services in terms of a master plan? What might they be doing? Because I think there might be some ways we could do some of this. Social media, Steve and Kate.
Absolutely.
You know, what ideas do they have? And again, not to overload other people, but a lot of this are their wheelhouses, and if we're all kind of working together on these things, I think, I think we can, we can advance them. One thing that jumps out to me, Karen, about the idea of kind of friends of and recreational assets, is that I think we have an issue at Lynch Field that we have to address.
Right.
I think we have an issue at, you know, I think we have a pressing issue at Lynch Field with the lights. I think as we're looking to doing something, you know, we had a very successful high school fields program, where we had a wonderful public-private partnership that I think in some ways kind of was a model for going forward. So perhaps one way to think about advancing some of these is through a particular project that's, that's a, that's a big need right now.
Yep.
And that might be a blueprint for how we start to do some of these things. And I know that for many of the sports groups in the community, having access to Lynch Field and being able to use it at night is significant. And also, as we think about the potential development that's going on there.
Yep.
I would imagine that for people who may be calling Beale Street home in the not-too-distant future, the lights that are there will be more disruptive to their home life than perhaps some new lights. So maybe there's a way to kind of work some of these. I just want to expand for a minute on the capital piece, and just again, reiterate, I think Beth's made some really good points about coordinating the efforts, but one of the things that we asked the advisory committee to take a look at is, not just for the next five years, but kind of the next 10 years, and to really build off some analysis that Ted did earlier this year, which is to start looking and saying, within, within sort of our tax levy, how much capacity do we have for these big capital projects? And the short answer is, not very much. And so what we're looking at is, okay, if we want to go ahead with all these projects, what does that mean in terms of issuing new debt? Now, we have a nice, a nice circumstance, which is that some projects, the Hingham High School, South Elementary School, a couple other projects, that debt is rolling off the books. So what many communities do is, as debt rolls off the books, perhaps they look at potentially taking on some new debt. Now, we also have financial metrics that, as Tom mentioned, we watch, the advisory committee watches. watches. One of them is our debt ratio. We want to make sure that, you know, just like in our households, we're not borrowing beyond our means. So the Advisory Committee actually has a task force that has been looking at this particular question and trying to build a little bit of a financial model that will help us inform, that will help inform some of these decisions. I'm feeling like we want to make sure that that work continues and starts to get visibility in the fall, particularly if there are going to be warrant articles related to projects.
Right, right.
To me, I don't, I don't want the first project to be ready to be the number-one priority project. I don't think readiness is, should be the factor that we use. And so I would like to make sure that we have enough time in the fall to begin that conversation because it's going to be so important to the various committees, and, you know, frankly, it'll be helpful to know what's, what's sort of an appetite the taxpayers have for projects. On one hand, we'd be replacing debt that's on the books. On the other hand, I know in our household budget, when we make that last car payment, it's kind of nice to have that extra cash. We don't necessarily go out and finance a new car. So we got to have that-
Well, I think the task force, the advisory is set up, will help you lead to that point because I think you just hit it on the head, Mary. It's not the first one that's your priority, it's the first one that's ready, really, because you've got about five or six projects, and we're moving into an inflationary period.
Right.
So every one of those projects is increasing by two to 5%. So on one hand, you're trying to save, or help the neediest taxpayers out. Well, the best way to do that always is to operate the government as efficiently as you possibly can so that you don't have to put any more burden on their backs. And so that's why I've been encouraging you for a while now to, and it's not, obviously, you're just the central board because a lot of these are school committee and recreation department and other groups that you're going to have to corral together to get to these answers. And the sooner you can get to them, the cheaper it'll be. The longer, the more expensive it'll be.
Yeah. And I would just close on this by saying that, you know, as we're looking at a lot of these, one thing that we all need to keep in mind is, Hingham's a AAA-rated bond community. We're one of a handful of communities in the whole Commonwealth with a AAA rating from all three rating agencies. That has to do with our management, our fiscal policy, all the great work that our employees and our volunteers do. And what that AAA bond rating does is it gives us access to capital markets and the ability to borrow at, at really about the lowest rates that are out there. Now, you know, we do, that's not necessarily a justification for borrowing money, but what, what I would point out is that the good stewardship that so many, that has been, that has been done over the years in Hingham means that we have the ability to, to look at these different projects, and the ones that we think are worth going for, we, you know, we should be able to borrow, borrow where we choose to. I'm going to make just a suggestion here, which is twofold. One is Ted and Tom, and thank you for this great work. If you could update the additional, the near-term goals page with the things, the new things that we heard tonight.
Absolutely.
And then what I'm going to ask is that you think about kind of what, what's, what's kind of within our capacity for this year? What, what could very naturally be-
We'll try to put a game plan for each of the goals you have.
Yep.
And as we do that, which we'll do an exercise for all of them, we kind of use that as a way to see, well, we're not going to be able to do all this, when you see all the steps necessary to do each one. And then, you know, we'll bring it to you and ask you to make decisions about which ones you want to advance forward.
And I would ask, you know, our next meeting is, is August 8th. And, you know, I know things are kind of quiet in the summer, but my hope is that we can come to consensus on our goals in the month of August because I think after Labor Day, the pace of things just picks up. And also, if we're asking people to help us out-
Sure.
-you know, we want to get this on their radar screen as well.
Yep.
Are there any additional questions or comments from the public on the goals and objectives? Yes, please, could you go to the mic?
Olivia Alana, 109 Fitzroy Drive in Hingham. First, I wanted to just thank all of you for all the hard work, and I wish more people came to these meetings because it's true, a lot of us don't know what you're doing. I wanted to applaud Karen's comments about fundraising. I think that we could do more of that, and people would probably like to do it. And I don't know if it's ever done, if you engage in a business that will be sustainable, that will bring money and provide jobs. So I don't know if towns do things like that, but then I'm sitting there, I'm thinking, besides fundraising, isn't there a business that we could help get started that is owned by the town, will provide jobs for people, and maybe even a place for the elderly to work, or young people to train, and would bring money into the town? So I don't know if that's done in towns, but it seems like a great town to do it, where people like to share, and, you know, I would love to see a pool here where people could swim, because as a physician, I tell all my patients to exercise, and it's non-impact, and it would make money. But other things come to mind, like urgent care centers make tons of money, and you guys need one, so why not have the town own it? And they profit like $700,000 a year.
So just to your, you know, profit is something that, one of the things that we're not able to do, actually.
Oh, it's not allowed?
So, no, as a nonprofit, and that great tax rate we get that you heard earlier is because we're a nonprofit. So we can create opportunities, and we have a few of them that you mentioned. Some of the other ideas are great, and I think they speak to what Selectman Johnson raised, but when we issue debt, we can't turn around and invest it in profitable, a profit-making business. The IRS would want their money back. So, because we're issuing taxes. So, so I can't go out and, you know, buy the land that Stop &amp; Shop has and build a supermarket down there at-
That the town owns.
At 2% rate that the town owns, when they have to go out into the marketplace and pay 6% or 7% for a commercial rate loan. That would be unfair competition. And essentially, the government could put out every business, literally, if we, if we did that. So that's one of the reasons why we can't. But we, a lot of the other things that you talked about, we do, and we can expand upon.
Right. I mean, you think about the Country Club, and a lot of the great things that go on at the Country Club. And I would also just mention that the town runs its own ambulance service, and that's something, that's a service that we provide here in town.
Correct.
And actually, that offsets a million dollars in the fire department budget every year. And we think that the quality of service and the quality of care is greater than in other communities. So it's, I think, an example of one of the things that you're highlighting, and, you know, I think the point is well-taken that, you know, we, we need to continue to be opportunistic and look for those opportunities to, to do it.
Is there any talk about a year-round pool? Because I know a lot of the residents travel to other towns to swim.
There is. It's undergoing right now. The Country Club is just in conversations with that, on that issue right now.
Didn't town meeting, town meeting voted some study money-
Correct.
-for the Country Club to, to take up kind of its entire physical plan, including in particular-
They're in the process of hiring someone to begin that work, that process.
Right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Paul? I'd like to speak to just the issue of opportunities and challenges. It's one of the things that we're doing up in South Hingham, in terms of the study group there. And fortunately, what we found is that medical operations require a tremendous amount of water to run. So, you know, with the opportunity comes the challenge, bone and muscle, signalized intersection, uses a lot of water. I think that in recent years, I think the town's been much more proactive in exploring opportunities with respect to development that comes into the community. And in particular, our recent experience with Avalon down on Lincoln Street, you know, we need a new ladder truck. And the developer, as a responsible citizen of the community, is, is part of that whole process, is, is going to fund the cost of that. And that is a significant savings to the Hingham taxpayers. So, and to me, it's, I want to keep the taxes down, but I'm also looking for opportunities wherever I can. I isn't sure, we all are, but sometimes it comes in different forms, and you just can't anticipate it.
Anyone else?
Beth Rockoff, 36 Pleasant Street. To her issue about a urgent care center, would it be allowed through, like, the fire department with the ambulance to have a center where you could go for emergencies? Or like in the health department?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not skilled enough to give you an answer to that right now, but I am skilled enough to look into it. If the board would like you to.
Thank you. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you. This is a good, a good discussion. I appreciate the input and the thoughts. And over the next couple of weeks, as we look at these, if anybody who's watching has additional thoughts or feedback, we would welcome that either directly to the Selectmen, our addresses are on the website, or to the Selectmen's Office. Next on the agenda, we have board and committee appointments. And a few weeks ago, we started the appointment process, and in fact, tonight, we still have a number of appointments still to be made. But tonight, I think I got, I got a couple requests, and I was feeling the same way that I was probably not ready to make some of the appointments, particularly to the school building committee, and found that, that there were a lot of sort of interdependencies. And so what, what we did is, we asked Ted and Tom to reach out to each of us to just say, where were we ready to vote? And not necessarily just to say specific appointments. And the thought was that where all three of us are ready to vote for a particular committee, we would do that. And I believe right now, tonight, we only have two, two committees to appoint to. Our commitment is that at our next meeting on August 8th, that we will do our very best to conclude all the appointments, and we certainly appreciate all of the very, very talented people who have and who continue to put their name forward for appointments. Another thing that we are doing as the appointments are being made is, is reaching out and following up to citizens who we've met with, who, for example, might have expressed an interest in one particular committee, if there isn't an opening on that committee, to see if they're interested in something else. For example, the moderator appoints to the audit committee. We had five very talented people interview for the audit committee for two positions. We followed up with those three candidates to see if perhaps they're interested in something else. So we're in the process of doing that. And so I think right now, tonight, we're ready to make only two appointments. If either of my colleagues would like to-
I'll move that we appoint Patricia Coyle to the cultural council.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we appoint Frank Gall to the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Any further discussion? And I believe that's Frank Gall III.
And which term is that ending? Do you have a-
I would request that we put that as a three-year term.
Yep.
That, I think we have a couple unexpired terms, but we still have two openings on the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
And-
And I traded some emails with Mr. Gall, and I certainly-
So for the 20?
Yeah. I certainly created the expectation of a three-year term.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, before we move into Selectman or Town Administrator reports, any question or comments about the appointments?
Let's do it some votes.
Okay. We do, thank you, Paul. We do, we actually do have a couple of additional votes. Ted or Tom, do we, could you just explain the Hingham Municipal Right request to install a streetlight?
So a request came in from a resident to look at a light on Upper Water Street. Previously, the way streetlights got to the town of Hingham, hodgepodge of ways, someone went to the highway department, someone came here, someone called the light plant. We tightened that up about, about five or six years ago, when I realized, not I realized, but we pay the bill. So, you know, I grew up in a household, you know, if you pay the bill, you got to at least some say in it. So, and in truth, the Board of Selectmen has the authority to notify the light plant to request, and that's how it's supposed to work. You guys, people are supposed to come to you, they're supposed to ask you, and then if you deem it appropriate, I can tell you that this section of Water Street, there are no lights from, almost by the tracks to the, to Central, to Main, rather. And it's a pretty dark section at night, so I think it's warranted.
How much does it cost typically?
There's no cost to put the light in. The cost is the annual maintenance, and I think it's $183 a year, or something like that. It's a very minimal per. I mean, the cost is a lot because we have so many of them, so.
And have the neighbors been?
Yeah. I mean, it's a, this was a neighbor request, and then you could see, if you just walk, just drive by the area, anyone tonight even, maybe a little, yeah, on the way home, you'll see that it's almost pitch black from Main Street all the way down, like, six or seven houses. So, and it's an area that people walk.
Yep.
Because it's, you know, a conduit to downtown.
Any questions? Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that we authorize the Hingham Municipal Light Plant to install street lighting on Upper Water Street or Lower Water Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one is the Hingham Maritime Center, Ted?
Ask Tom to take it on.
Oh, Tom, sorry.
So as part of the Hingham Maritime Center lease document, the Board of Selectmen has authority to, over any signage that's put on that property, and your, the vote before you identifies Section 4.1.2i as the authority for, for your vote.
We have a rendering, rendering of the sign. Any questions, Karen or Paul? And the building commissioner and the town engineer are both comfortable with the location?
Yes, yes, they are. And there is, and I've been told that the jurisdiction lies solely with you to authorize this. You had asked about some zoning.
So it sounds like a building permit would be issued once we approve.
Exactly.
Okay. And the, the cost is all borne by the Maritime Center?
That's right.
And this was part of the lease, right?
The authority for you guys to authorize that was part of the lease, the negotiations, yes.
Perfect. Any questions from the audience?
It's a pretty cool sign.
Beautiful sign. Do you want to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. That, I move that pursuant to Section 4.1.2 Romanet I of the lease between the town of, the town and Hingham Maritime Center, Inc., the board voted to approve the place, size, color, and style of the sign to be installed on the property as shown on the drawing entitled "Proposed Painted Dimensional Sign, Single-Faced, Dated 7/8/2017."
Phew. Am I just going to abstain for purposes of consistency?
I'm going to second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Staying one.
Please.
Okay, thank you. And Ted, we've mentioned this a few times in the meeting, but the intervention status with respect to the proposed acquisition of Aquarian Water by Eversource?
So in conversations with litigation counsel, it's felt that it would be in the town's interest to intervene in this matter. Aquarian has sold its company, or has an agreement to sell its company to Eversource. As you know, equity stake or ownership costs are the basis for calculations of the rate base and earnings on the rate base. And, you know, the, the Aquarian has received an offer to, to sell for, you know, potentially a lower price than they have existently sold, so why should the new ratepayers have to pay a higher rate? So we have every right to intervene and, and should to ensure that the ratepayers in our region are being appropriately dealt with.
And this vote typically, because this board has, has the authority over legal proceedings, this is a request from counsel, which is essentially us authorizing the effort, the effort on this.
Correct. And counsel doesn't feel at this point in time, the actual intervention will, will cost significant legal dollars, and you'll have an opportunity to make decisions going forward if you wanted to engage further legal.
Any questions?
Well, since I'm not a litigator, and I don't even play one on TV, I am a little confused about what we're actually intervening in. So I understand that Eversource is in the process of acquiring Aquarian, and I understand that there are regulatory approvals that Eversource needs to get, particularly antitrust-type approvals because of Eversource's holdings throughout New England. antitrust-type approvals, because of Eversource's holdings throughout New England. So what are we intervening in? Because there's no litigation right now to
Well, the DPU through 17115 will approve the acquisition, and we're intervening in that conversation.
Okay, what is DPU 17115? And I'm sorry, you guys have talked about this, I haven't, so
Well, I'm not sure if everybody
Well, I thought, Mary, you've talked to
So I spoke to counsel about it. And I think I'm probably the only one who's spoken to counsel about it. And counsel has said that this is, this is the way, and so the vote that he's structured is the way for us to begin the process of intervening in the acquisition between Aquarian Water Company and Eversource Energy in front of the DPU.
Okay. So DPU has to issue some sort of approval pursuant to this, maybe 17115?
That's my understanding.
And so we'd be
We'd be
A party in interest then in this?
Correct.
Yeah?
And so I know that counsel's been speaking with the Attorney General about, you know, their role in the process, and, you know, this came to us last week with his request for us to intervene in this. So I can't give you any more detail than that, I'm sorry.
I guess I'll talk to counsel. I'm, I'm happy to vote on it, I just am
I mean, I don't know what court it's being in front of. I can give you those details, if you need those specifics, very quickly, but not tonight.
Okay.
And what counsel has shared with me is that this intervention status gives us the right to be part of the conversation.
But not a requirement, so that you have the later opportunity to pull us back if you do not want to go that far in each of these situations.
Right. And I, okay.
So that's your opportunity to ask a lot of questions.
I'm just trying to get some clarity around what it is we're intervening in. It sounds like a regulatory approval process related to the acquisition of Aquarian by Eversource.
That's my understanding. This is not entering into legal litigation in a specific court, bringing a court action forward to block a sale. This is only participating in the regulatory process of approving the sale
Okay.
As an interested party.
Okay.
If it's something different than that, then I will
I actually, well, I may, I may actually need to abstain on this one. So Ropes and Gray represents Eversource in the acquisition of the Aquarian Water Company. I don't have anything to do with that, as I have fully disclosed on it, and you can tell by the quality of my questions, I'm not in the litigation department. I'm also not a part of this transaction on the purchase side. But I guess I'd feel, I have gotten permission from Ropes and Gray to participate in the rate deliberations, and I've gotten participate, consent from Ropes and Gray to participate in the, in our potential acquisition of Aquarian. But I have not specifically asked Ropes and Gray about this kind of a vote, so notwithstanding the fact I've sidetracked the discussion, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay.
I'll move that we intervene in the Eversource Energy proposed acquisition of Aquarian Water Company of Massachusetts, Inc., DPU 17-115.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstained. And the last thing that we have is a vote to proclaim Saturday, August 12th, 2017, as Hingham Farmers Market Day. And I know we have people in the audience who are interested in this, so I'd actually like to read this proclamation, which we will sign. And I understand that we've been invited to come on August 12th and ring the bell. So Karen, you got to ring it already once this year.
I know, I won't take my turn.
So you've had your turn. I had the honor, I think, the year before last, so we'll
Maybe your turn, Paul.
Oh, boy.
Paul's turn. All kidding aside, you know, the farmers market just continues to be such a vibrant, wonderful activity down at the harbor. And if you drive by on Saturday and see all the cars and just the, the great vibe that goes on there, you have a lot of small businesses, local businesses, just really quality, quality items. It's just, it, it's become such a real gem in Hingham, and we're so fortunate, and we very much appreciate all of the volunteer, all of the volunteer work performed by the Friends of the Farmers Market, by Mark Cullings, who heads up the Farmers Market. It's just a really special place. So let me, let me read this, because it's, it's got some interesting information. Whereas His Excellency Governor Charles D. Baker of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has proclaimed August 6th through 12th, 2017, to be Massachusetts Farmers Market Week. And whereas farmers markets are essential to the vitality of Massachusetts farms and are part of the cultural tradition of the Commonwealth. And whereas the Commonwealth is home of 241 summer and fall farmers markets and 47 winter farmers markets, which create a festive, open-air setting which enhances community spirit and civic pride by offering a natural place for community gathering. And whereas over 150 farmers markets participate in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, thereby increasing access to fresh, healthy foods to all citizens of the Commonwealth. And whereas farmers markets help heighten public awareness of the agricultural diversity of Massachusetts and the benefits of buying local and preserving open space. And whereas it is befitting for the citizens of Hingham to recognize the continued, continued contribution of farmers markets to local consumers, as well as their positive impact on the economy of the Commonwealth. And whereas Hingham's tradition of its farmers markets, now in its 40th season, make it the third oldest in the Commonwealth. Now we therefore, the Hingham Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim August 12th, 2017, to be Hingham Farmers Market Day, and urge all citizens to take cognizance of this event and participate fittingly in, in its observance dated this 25th day of July, 2017. So I'd like to make a motion that we proclaim Saturday, August 12th, 2017, as Hingham Farmers Market Day.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mark. Ted and Tom, reports?
I think we've covered everything in our reports and our agenda already.
Okay. I just want to say that Ted and Tom have started in the last few weeks, putting together kind of a written report of the last few weeks. I know we've covered it all. It's really helpful to get that and to see it. And even for us, sometimes you lose sight of what goes on in this office, and so it's really very helpful. Karen, anything?
Well, not to be Debbie Downer, but I, I got to tell you, I was so, so disappointed to hear that somebody went and ripped down all of the signs in, or many of the signs in Bearcove Park related to the dog-walking program. So we, the three of us, Tom and Ted, the entire town hall staff, the Bearcove Park Committee, the Bearcove Park staff, volunteers, Horatio, we worked so hard to get this thing off the ground. The town clerk stuff, as Mary knows from today, is going beautifully. Eileen and her staff, with Kate Richardson's IT platform, all of that signup stuff's going fantastically well. People know what they need. They're coming in, they're being processed, they're getting their lanyards. And we were trying to, trying to provide signage in the park so that people knew what the rules were, and knew where the boundaries were. You heard me, you know, probably a month ago, asked the question, like, how am I, how am I supposed to know where I'm supposed to be off-leash or on-leash? And Tom said, well, we're going to have signage. Because part of this is an educational program, it's not meant to be a gotcha program. So we're going to try to put as much educational material as we can out there. And I got to tell you, it's just so disappointing. So, you know, we on our side are, are trying to facilitate this program, and we could really use all your help in, in continuing to do that.
Thank you. Paul?
I neglected to say this at the last meeting, but I wanted to thank the, the town employees for the great work that they all did on the Fourth of July holiday. It really was great to see, you know, the police, the fire, the highway, the light company, just working seamlessly for, you know, a very happy holiday that was experienced, you know, either down at the harbor, or at the parade, or the, you know, the, the run in the morning. I don't take that for granted, ladies and gentlemen, and I truly appreciate the hard work that you put into it. And to follow up on the, the clock
[laughing]
And I, again, thank the residents for supporting that initiative. Last Saturday, a couple Saturdays ago, Ross and Dave Hockstrasser took apart the clock at the New North Church, and had the pleasure of watching them go up on a bucket to remove the, the hands of clock on all four sides. And they're in the process of rebuilding that now. This is the first of four clocks. It's, that's a great building, the New North Church. There's pews that General Benjamin Lincoln sat in, Governor Andrew, who was the governor of Massachusetts during the Civil War, commissioned the 54th Mass, Governor, you know, Secretary Long, who was the Secretary of the Navy during the Spanish-American War. It's, it's a great building. And to see the clock restored there was really, really a pleasure. And the reason I'm going on and on about that is because HCAM filmed the removal of it, and you can see that. And, and I thank HCAM for doing that, because, you know, this is, this is a lesson in history. And to speak to your desire to, you know, increase, you know, our residents' awareness of history, I think that, you know, its appreciation can come in all forms, whether it's the houses you live in, or the, something like this, you know, having functioning clocks like this in our town, and they're eight-day clocks, too, by the way, they have to be one once a week. This is great. I mean, this, this is really just a part of Hingham that, you know, you can't put a value on. So I look forward to seeing this clock, you know, go into operation, and if you get a chance to go down and see the church, I'd strongly recommend it. From a historical perspective, it's a beautiful building.
Thank you. And I would just echo your thanks and add our thanks to the Fourth of July Parade Committee, the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the Recreation Commission. Fourth of July is just one of the greatest days in Hingham, and it, it takes a village to make it a special day. What was really noteworthy to me was, I think, probably an hour after the parade finished, I drove through the square, and it looked like there hadn't even been a parade.
I love that.
It was really impressive. I saw DPW workers with rakes, raking the first three feet of residents' lawns on the parade route to pick up three. It really
That was appreciated.
It, it really was very much appreciated, and Paul, Paul lives on the route. So, again, apologies for, for not mentioning that at our last meeting, but our thanks, the Fourth of July Parade Committee is already planning next year's parade. It's, it's, it's a year-round effort on their part. The board is going to go into executive session. We are not going to return to general session. So I'd like to recommend that the board enter into executive session. One, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for potential negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator Ted Selexiades. And two, to discuss strategy with respect to Roger Fernandez's employment contract, because discussion of these matters in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. The board will not resume open session this evening. By roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, everybody. Good evening.